A heater. That's a air conditioner. Uh, the thermostat. For us, can you also? I thought it would, but it doesn't have a heat button. It only has cooling options.
That's weird.
Yeah. I didn't think it had a heat one. Yeah.
When, when we talk, does it sw- yeah, okay, it does that. Hello, Scott, how are we?
How are you?
Fantastic.
Yeah, I want to show you something.
Oh, boy. What, what is that?
That's, that's, that's a sea ball. It likes me.
Oh, right.
It's a seagull?
It's a seagull?
Yeah, that, yeah. Can you see it?
Oh, here you go. Oh, you got a buddy.
It goes away for the summer, but I spent the rest of the year on my parapet.
He must know you're zooming to Maine.
I know, yeah, there's some sort of connection there.
He's very loud. Not going to be turned down.
Yeah, Scott, you are super loud on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that on my end?
Is that us?
Or maybe it's us. Is it us?
I'm trying to, my, the mouse is not cooperating at all.
It's great.
I tried to turn this down.
Yeah, it's probably on our end, Scott.
All right, now.
Speak now, see how you do.
Very good.
But it's us. All right, we're just waiting for the clock to strike six.
See somebody's, um, taking down the buildings on that.
And a garage that was under, demolished it and backfilled it in there and.
Yeah, I saw that and I was thinking, I thought that was the most interesting. They can't do it again.
No, it's in the right of way. So it's in the right, it was totally in the right way. Oh, isn't that interesting?
That is, because I, I thought, well, that's kind of the coolest thing back up to like almost, almost right up to the house is like. The right of way.
All right, let's get going. Paul to order the town, town amount dessert planning board meeting for September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Welcome aboard. As we are both here in the town meeting hall on C Street and on Zoom live. Um, so first, um, item tonight, let's just make introductions of board members here. Um, William Manley, chairman, we've got Meredith Randolph, Tracy Loftus Keller, Alan Kimerly next to me, and Gail Marshall. And Gail's our, Gail is our alternate member, and I think one of the first things we should do since Dave Ashmore is not here tonight, uh, perhaps we could entertain a motion to vote Gail on as a voting member tonight.
Uh, Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to vote Gail on as a voting member for this evening's meeting.
I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome aboard. All right, and then I'll just give my quick little Zoom spiel. I'm sure we all know how Zoom works by now. And, uh, if you are on Zoom, if you could please just sign in on the chat. So our recording secretary has a list of who's online and it's being recorded anyhow on, on Zoom. And if you're, um, if you are on Zoom and, um, just I'd say mute yourself until, uh, we get to your, your, your item on the agenda or we call on you. And, uh, let's, let's get going. All right, so I don't believe we have any minutes to review tonight.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's quite okay, Heidi. And, uh, let's soldier down the agenda. So already we're on item three tonight, and item three is conditional use approvals. We have, um, app, conditional use approval applications. And we have two of those tonight. And the first one tonight is conditional use approval application oh one oh twenty twenty three. The owner is Lifestyle Research Retreat LLC. Agent is Scott Connectio, Architect PC. Location is fourteen Ox ledge Way, Steel Harbor. Tax map thirty lot fifty one. Zone is rural or woodland three. Purpose is section three point four recreational, non-commercial, outdoor recreational facility, swimming pool and spa. We had a site inspection at four thirty and was this one advertised and?
Yeah, I have it here. Yes, um, it was advertised in both the Ellsworth American and the Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, September fourteenth in that publication. And it was, the butters were notified by notice dated September eleventh, two thousand twenty three.
Fantastic, thanks. So we had our site visit at four thirty. And perhaps Gail would like to report on her observations from the site visit today.
Perhaps.
What did you see out there, Gail?
I saw a foundation from a prior parent residence that the apparently according to the gentleman who conducted the site visit with us, the owner has decided that it would instead make an excellent swimming pool with a, with natural features, use, re, using part of the wall that's part of the foundation for part of the project. There's also, we were told and shown in the plans where there's going to be a facility, um, um, I'm not sure what's taken place in the facility. You mentioned the kitchen, you mentioned other things.
It was like a pool house.
A pool house, yeah. And, um, and there's going to be various patios and it's pretty much going to stay around or within the footprint of, of um, the prior, uh, property.
Right, would anybody else like to add to that?
I think, uh, we heard that, that they were not going to have the wood burning outdoor fireplace.
That's true, yes.
And done in plans.
Right. And there's to be a, um, um, fence around the, you know, wide perimeter around the pool and property to keep, uh, deer and other animals and things, um, clear of the pool.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. And, uh, Scott, I'm gonna turn it over to you to just, uh, make a introduction to the project and add to any of those observations the planning board had.
Well, first of all, thank you for your service on the planning board. Uh, it's appreciated. Uh, so yes, so you, what you saw, I'm probably Rick Andrews, who showed you around, probably told you was the old Van Allen, uh, the foundations of the old Van Allen House. And that house, uh, was actually occupied by the daughter of Ethel Ford. So that house and, and Skylines above are interconnected in various ways. There's a common driveway, uh, that has, there, there was a common garden. Uh, so when it came up for sale, uh, it seemed irresistible to put it back, uh, as part of the estate that it once was. So that was the original motivation. The idea originally was to restore the house, but, um, uh, and they actually had Keith Krieger, uh, looking at it very carefully, and it just was not salvageable. So once it was pulled down, uh, um, it suddenly became, um, obvious in a way to Martha at least, uh, that it'll make a great swimming pool. And, uh, one of the things I think you probably noticed is, uh, that incredible pink granite ledge going underneath what was the house. So that will be retained in the pool. And then the original rails are basically the north and south, I'm rounding the compass off on that, uh, would be retained. And then on the east and west, uh, those rails would be extended. So the pool would then be uh, approximately a hundred feet long and, uh, and then twenty, and then between the walls that exists twenty, twenty feet wide. Uh, so there is, um, and there is an effort, uh, both aesthetically and, and also uh, in reference to climate to, uh, to reuse as much as we can. So, uh, every stone that you saw is going to be sliced up to be used for terrace. Uh, then of course you saw the rails that will be retained. Uh, and the idea of the, the impacts of conservation that is to offset the embedded carbon that is inevitable when you are pouring concrete. So we're trying to do what we can. Um, yeah, and then the pool house is simply a sauna, uh, a bathroom and a, and a kitchen, um, all of them around ten feet square. Uh, yeah, and then, and then the, um, what I call the view terrace, there was, that you also saw when you were there, that will be, uh, restored. Uh, and, and also form one, uh, one end of the pool. Um, so are there any questions or?
Well, let's, um, let's open it up to the public. Yes, and but however, first, let's see if there's any conflict of interest on the board with this application. None heard. So back to the public. Open it up for public comment, either online or here in person. We have one member in the audience tonight, Scott. Not hearing any public comment either in person or online. So why don't we close public comments and, um, get to it. So, um, let's see. So we voted on conflict of, well, there was no conflict of interest. Um, let's first see if we can have a motion for finding the application complete.
I make the motion to find the application that we found the application to be complete.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that motion.
Right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And then, um, any consideration, maybe using the short form checklist tonight?
I'll make a motion to utilize the short form, please.
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor of using the short form tonight? Aye, opposed? And then we do our little weird thing where, um, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I will second that.
And then we press the pause button and we have our discussion and review of the application. So let's get to it. So I have the application before me. The submittals. I've got a short form checklist, I hope, right here. And we are going through sections six A and six B and we're not going through section sixty because it's not in the shoreline zone, nor are we going through section five nine. So let's go, let's do it. So section six A one, one of our favorite sections, compatibility.
If I may say, need compatibility as it in its plain language, it says the proposed use shall be compatible with the permitted uses within the district in which it is located as measured in terms of its side. And I would suggest that in this case, it certainly is compatible with permitted uses within the district.
Absolutely.
And it also seems to be compatible with the neighborhood in general, but that seems to be a different standard.
So we've got the physical size, they've got, um, the, that's indicated on the, um, the which is, uh,
A.
Yeah, the A A one oh one and the A two oh two sheets, visual impact, they have ro, rendering submitted. Um, proximity to other structures, there were real, really no other structures pro, and close to it, density of development. It's in the middle of the woods on a, on a foundation. So I'm going to say C application. Uh, erosion and sedimentation control.
So plan provided? Well, I guess they're not disturbing much because they're actually building up from what is there rather than having to dig down.
Yeah, and then, and then also.
There should be, there was a plan submitted for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And erosion and sedimentation control. I mean, yeah, so C, C application. The only thing is, um, Scott, you don't have anything filled out for, for section six eight two erosion and sedimentation control.
Always, uh, sent in by Greg Johnson's office.
Yeah, so.
It's not in my book, uh, but, but you should have it somewhere there.
Do we have, uh?
Yes. Um,
There's a, they're not draining.
You have the six eight, the action. Yeah. This, it, yeah.
Uh, it may be twenty five. I, I got, I got on, online, but it maybe has been printed twenty four by thirty six.
Yeah, no, it's, you've got everything submitted, Scott, on it, it looks like, but just the actual application itself under six eight two, it wasn't completed.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I just have Greg come in and, and check the, fill that out on the original application, just so the, so you got a clean record.
Thank you.
Yep. So that was six eight two, and that was, um, we're gonna go ahead and say C application. Highway safety. That is N, N A. Impact on town services, six eight four. Um, we'll say it's not going to have any impact. So C application.
Well, we had, we, they didn't seem to be clear about how they were going to manage the water and they seem to have some misunderstandings and that is actually.
So let's, let's just talk about that. Um, in, in dealing with the water in the pool, Scott, just to, you know, we just had this come up, I think, a hearing or two ago that, um, you know, the, because we had the, and you should consult the public works department on this, Brian Henkel, but, um, when we were on site at the site visit today, um, you know, there was maybe some mention about, you know, when the, if the pool had to be drained, about putting it into the sanitary sewer system. And I don't think you can do that in, in the town, that it, it either has to be, um, dissipated back into the groundwater after being neutralized. Or if, if you had access to the, um, the storm sewer, it could potentially go in there. But I would just, um, talk to, uh, the public works department on that.
Well, uh, yeah, uh, though, the, another Johnson item is, uh, a letter regarding that that was submitted. And, uh, and it, and it does, it does say that, uh, uh, the public groups, people that really grow should be consulted before, uh, discharge.
Mm-hmm.
Right, um.
Yeah, oh, that's.
This is.
That does, that does it. Yep.
C application.
Yes, so it's the application for six eight four. Land suitability. Oh, seems like a good spot, but. Um.
Could we just go back, um, but the impact on town services for nothing, um, filling the pool and using the water supply. Is that usually done by truck or?
Yeah.
It's the, yes, they usually order water.
Thank you.
Uh, land suitability, six eight five. They say C attached. We've got number of plans submitted. I'm going to see C application, lighting outdoor.
Sorry.
Yeah, go for it.
That issue, just that it's not in the, that we have the draining, the pool. I guess I just, we need to cover our, make sure that
Yeah.
uh, we cover ourselves and that it's not in the application that we've said this, but it should be in that application saying impact on town, that they will deliver the water by truck, that they will just, you know, because we've just said it and then it could happen and oh, but you didn't have it in the application.
Let's, let's.
Make sure it's a.
Perma condition.
Condition, yeah, okay.
So let's.
Just want to make sure we cover ourselves.
No, good, good, good note. And let's circle back to that when we get to permit conditions. Um, lighting outdoor. Uh, Scott, you gave us some specs on lighting. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, um, lighting is actually quite limited. Uh, it's not, uh, we are not, it isn't being designed for night use. Uh, but of course there will be lighting there for safety purposes. Uh, but all the lighting will be, uh, down lighting. So there'll be lighting under the roof of the pool pavilion. And then there is lighting in the, there's limited lighting in the pool. But so that is, that's, that is the, the light is focused down, not up.
Okay. Yeah, and you state that in the application. It's all informed to section six A six and it's all down lighting.
Yeah.
So six A six, C application. Six A seven, stormwater. You say C engineers info. We've got the letter from Greg Johnston. C application. Vegetation.
Not applicable, it says. Seem like there are two disturbing any vegetation.
Yeah, you're, uh, you're not having to clear or disturb vegetation for installing the pool because you're using an existing.
Exactly, yes. That one benefits.
So C application, six eight nine, dust, fumes, vapors, odors and gases. You say N A.
I should say.
Promise.
Right, so the findings of fact are that the findings of fact are presented by the applicant and attached to application. And the conclusion was that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so move.
Meredith Randolph, second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, there's section six A. Section six B. All right, most of these are not N A. So six B one agriculture, N A. Six B two, which shouldn't even be on the checklist anymore, is air landing sites, N A. Six B seven excavation or filling. And they say N A. Then it jumps to on the checklist, section sixty sixteen. And that's.
Section sixty eight.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, six B eight fences and walls, right?
Uh, the walls are over six feet?
Yeah.
From the ground?
Yeah.
That's not more.
Yeah, and just again, Scott, I would have Greg come in and fill out section six B eight on the original application, just again to clean the record up.
Okay, I'll take it online again, six B what, eight?
Six B eight.
Eight, okay.
Yeah, um, and talk to us about fences.
The fence was on, uh, shown on the plan, um, so, you know, four foot fence, uh, uh, get the two, there'll be two entrances, there's a path, and then there's, there's a driveway that actually is going to be a path, not a driveway. Uh, so there are two gates, a four foot fence, but then the four foot fence dies on, on, uh, and then I, let it fall the west side of the, the pavilion because that is above four feet. So the pool, the fence just dies into that. And then equally on the east side, where, where there's four feet, uh, four foot wall, the fence dies into that.
Okay, and that's shown on section or on plan A one oh two.
Yeah.
I'm still concerned that and I think that it's a Kim issue as to whether that that, that's a wide surface and somebody swimming is very easily just going to stand on the, on the wall, top of the wall.
Well, you can see it in the rendering.
Um, and I don't know the addition, you know, we're, we're dealing with it from what's rendered, but if there's.
Well, okay, so.
Be a fence on top of the retaining wall.
Well, yes, if you look at A one oh five. And then also the plan, you can see that what I did is I have stone pillars blocking the pathway to the river, the pool.
Mm-hmm. I, Scott, I think what, a question that came up at the, at the site meeting today and what Meredith is kind of getting at is like that outer edge of the pool, um, where you're pouring the wall on the top of the foundation, there's like a ten foot drop from the pool coping stone like down the grade. And that's really not our purview, but just there was a question about what happens if someone's on that and.
Uh, I, I respect the comment and, uh, and I did anticipate, uh, that, and that's why I blocked all stat walkway with these pillars, these stone pillars. So it's, it's not accessible. And, and, and also, and there is a code, uh, uh, to reference for, for getting out of a pool. And that, and that does not, uh, that code does not be clued to the way, the way it is.
I think it has to be, I, I don't know. I, I, and I think it's a code issue, just like when does, when does Kim found it, so. Because I, I think realistically, people will swim and jump up on that wall and they'll stand up on that wall and.
I hear you. I'm pretty sure that's going to come up when they file for the construction.
But it comes up now because if they, if that outer wall is more than six feet, then we're to this, this section of the code. And if then adding a, uh, if Kim comes and says, you need to have a fence, like, let's say that the wall is at max six feet right now, and then she says you have to have a retaining guard, then we're over the six feet. And they should have reviewed it.
Right, or the.
They do a catch one too.
Uh, it seems like too, though, that a lot of our, our fence um, reviews on pools is that the pools are, are enclosed by a fence, you know, like the general pool area. Like I haven't, we haven't had one yet unless.
With this much height.
Yeah, with that. Yeah, with that much height.
But that's to keep people out.
Yeah.
And this wall will definitely, there's no way anybody's getting in from the low side.
I think if, if this comes up in the, in the construction permit, that they may have to submit amended, an amended plan. Um, showing maybe a lower terrace or something below.
Or, or stepped.
Yeah, or something stepped to it because, and then what Kim typically does in those situations is then she comes back to the chair and she says. Hey, look, an amended plan was submitted for the pool and, you know, does this need to come back before the board and, you know, I, I. Reference that, hey, look, we did have the discussion about the concern of the height of the coping stone to the, the grade below and, um. You know, if whatever an amendment was, if there even was one, if it, uh, if the chair felt to address that and we're, we can soldier on or it needed to come back, but. What I'm getting at is, I feel like we've discussed it, it's on the record, and it's definitely gonna come up when they apply for their construction permit.
Yeah. So the only thing is that the existing wall. Um, the, I don't, has anybody seen that drawing in here that shows us what the maximum height from the outside? You, Bill, you just said ten, I don't think it's ever ten, but we weren't hold that the pool is seven feet deep. Um, and is that. That would tell us that then the wall has to be seven. Unlike, because I don't, it doesn't strike me that the pool ever, that the foundation went down even any lower. It wasn't ever lower than the grade, which means that the wall is seven feet tall at some point.
Definitely, yeah, it's obviously, yeah.
Yeah, like Meredith, it's, it looks like the, the.
It looks pretty tall there.
It looks like the tallest section of the wall was where they were extending it beyond, uh. The, the existing foundation.
And that's where he said that it would be a seven foot deep pool.
Yeah.
Does that mean that the outside?
It's.
Is over six feet tall.
Imagine it would be. Wall would be over six feet tall because he said the bottom of the pool is gonna be raised up once you get all the plumbing down. And then they go back on top of that. So it probably will be quite a, a drop over that edge. And I could see kids running all the way around the whole thing.
And all we ever review six foot tall, over six foot tall walls is whether it makes any of the neighbors unhappy, and nobody's here unhappy about it, so I don't think it's. It's a holdup or anything, but I do think that it should be recognized in the application that they. Needed to actually have that wall reviewed, that it was an over six foot tall wall.
So there's permit condition number two.
Yeah, yeah. Well, but what's, don't we have to have? Like swimming pool regulations or, I mean, we're not talking about. A deck, we're not talking, we're talking about a body of water, we're not, we're not. What, what are we meaning to, to say that? To say that they need to address this issue.
Remember.
I mean, it's a practical issue, I hear what you're saying. Well, it's a wall. Despite the fact that there's. Water inside of it, the outside of it is a wall. And we have this fence and wall. That works.
Mm hmm.
Re- remember that we're, we're permitting the use of it.
Right.
And when we get into the construction specifics of it, that, that goes under Kim's umbrella.
Good.
But I hear you, Meredith, and that's permit condition number two.
Okay.
So, um. So back to the checklist, so, um, for six B eight, we're gonna say C application. And then sig, and then it jumps to six B sixteen sign regulations. N A. Six B eighteen wireless communication facilities, my favorite, N A. Six B nineteen animal husbandry two, N A. Six B twenty mobile food vendors, N A.
Don't think Mark lost that.
Yeah. Six B twenty one rooming house, N A. And six B twenty two hotels and motels, N A. So the finding of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B, except for section six B eight. And the conclusion was that section six B is not applicable, except for section six B eight, for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved. Eight.
Would you like to, Meredith's? Thinking. Would you, we could change six B eight to C notes abo- below. And we could reference in the notes, um, C, uh. Attached permit condition.
Yeah, that might be clearer.
Well, and they've met the standards. Of. Uh, all the conditions of. It has been met, and you were saying, uh. And it only applies to six B. Which six B did you say?
Eight.
Eight.
Fences and walls.
Okay. Yes, that's fine, and we, then we just have conditions, they're fine.
So you, you want me to change it to C notes below and reference?
I think you can say it the way that you said it, and we'll just do it with conditions.
Right, so with six B eight stays C application. The motion stays the same.
Yeah.
Did we add the second? On the motion?
I will second that, yes.
All right, all those in favor? Hi, opposed? All right, so.
Clarify you want for which standard is met on. Six B eight.
Six B eight, yeah. So then, going to, um. Just we'll have to have a commission on this anyhow, but, um, section six C shoreline zoning standards. Um, that is N A. So the proposed use, law, the proposed law is entirely outside of the shoreline zone, and the conclusion, conclusion was that section sixty is not applicable.
I make that motion. Tracy Keller, second.
Great, all those in favor? Hi. Opposed? And then, um. Section five nine where it is not. In the shoreline zone, section five nine. Uh, it's not applicable.
So moved. Second.
Right, all those in favor? Hi, opposed? All right, and then the permit conditions. Uh, the first permit condition was relative to the discharge of water.
And the shipping in of water.
Right.
On town, on town, we, we, or do we need to categorize that, or we could just say this is a condition that they. That they clarify in the application that water will be shipped, shipped in. And that. They will. Uh, get cleared directive from what? Well.
Public Works Department.
Public Works Department on disposal of water.
Yeah. Did you get that?
I did, hold on. Written direction from Public Works, you want something that you can add, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but the clear written directive should be added into the application.
So first is applicant must clarify in the application that the water will be shipped in and, uh. Written direction from the Department of Public Works regarding the discharge of water. Is that gonna work?
Should be included in the application.
To be included in it.
To be.
Yeah, and, uh, it's, okay.
Then the second permit condition. The wall.
Yeah, but how is it stated?
I know, Meredith, Scott, some word.
Oh, you think I do, do you? How about clarify the applicability of the. Ordinance standards for. Um. What would you call it, the height, oh.
Uh, elevation, fence height.
But, yeah. Do we wanna clarify on the application what the exterior wall?
Yeah.
As it is drawn now is.
Yes, then clarify. Um. Exterior wall height dimension to be cli- clarified by applicant.
But we're already proving it, so I don't know what the point is.
Yeah, um. Then should we, what about the permit condition being relative to the, um, consultation with code enforcement during the. Construction permit ting.
A phase.
Phase, if a fence is required on top of the. Pool wall.
You, to that last bit again, relative to consultation with the CEO to.
Clarify if a fence is required on top of the, um. Pool wall.
Well, that's giving the answer, why don't we just say like, review the. Uh, um, what is that, the south wall? Uh, for safety. Because he could put in terraces, he could put in, you know, there could be a, a variety of ways if it doesn't. Need it to say specific to.
I think we gotta.
Leading, you know. Which of her codes is this, this is, is this a like code? Yeah, you're not allowed to have, like, you can't have a quartz that's more. No, I know, I know, yeah, I know, I know that, but I'm just in terms of.
I think.
That, as you said earlier, that all has to be gone through, right, with Kim, so does it even need to be a condition? She, mm, I could, can imagine that she might. I just don't want her to say, oh, it all went through code enforcement, so it's all good, and just not. Notice it, because we provided approval and she could say, well, the. Pool's all good, they, they reviewed it, I don't think she'd do that.
I think we just keyed into section six, um, have code enforcement clarify if a fence is required on top of the wall per. Sections six A, six, six B eight. Or make the drop not so high, yeah, or have to fill in some earth.
She could come up, they could come up with a different solution, but just that, that's what provoked the question is sixty, which is.
Especially if it shifts rock ledge right under. At the bottom of that drop. So code enforcement clarify if fences required on top of pool. Pool wall.
South wall.
Pool, south wall.
Yes, and that for south.
Yes, it's definitely, that should be south, that would be developed.
It's, it's getting downed off, downed off the compass itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Did you see on the plans that I do have those pillars there to make that walk with that, the rim not accessible?
If you have, have a six year old swimming around in that pool and they climb up on that wall. And fall off. We don't wanna be sued. And that's all.
So. She or anything says more southeast west.
Well, you get the views looking. Like this is looking southwest. This is a view looking southwest. So this is the sun guy.
You all click down there in the bottom.
Yes.
You're looking north, yeah.
It's, it's really not up to us whether it's safe or not, it's not in our previous, you know, I, I can see, it's just a question, so it's just up to Kim.
Uh, for your information, uh, I did check with the, the person that's doing the pool. Uh, does pools throughout the region, but, uh, I knew this ones in, uh, Maine. And, uh, he sent me, uh, I don't know, ten or twelve, uh, photos of pools with walls like this in the state, uh, without guardrails. So this is not, uh, this is not unique. I would gladly share, for your information, I'd gladly share those photos with you.
Yeah, I.
It's not up to us anyway.
Yeah, I think that's gonna come up, Scott, when, again, when you file for the construction permit, I would definitely show those photos to Kim at that point.
Yeah.
All right, so what, what are our two permit?
Okay, uh, the applicant, it, it's scribbled, so.
Yeah.
The applicant must clarify in the application that water will be shipped in. And the. I'm sorry. Um, okay, I'm sorry, the, will be shipped in and, um, written direction from the Department of Public Works. Must be included in the application regarding the discharge of water, uh, and then, into any town system, right?
Yeah, it. Yes, into any town, so neutralized, um.
And they can ship it away as well.
Yeah, they can, they can ship it out, just saying. They can't just pour it down the road either, can't.
Yeah.
Water is in the letter too, that was sent by Greg Johnson.
Yes.
He addressed that.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so how do you want to finish that water discharge? Again, let me say that again.
If it were to be, uh, I mean, if it's gonna be discharged into the town system that they consult the Public Works Department.
There are proper ways, you know?
Yeah.
This says this water is directed to an area that would not cause erosion, which is a storm drain system, so that is why it needs to be clarified.
Okay, so the applicant must clarify in the application that the water will be shipped in. And written direction from the Department of Public Works regarding discharge, if discharged into. Uh, a town system. Uh. But, um, and I, it's all squished together here, and then the wall. Um, uh. Advocate must clarify the applicability of ordinance standards for fence height on exterior wall. Um.
Exterior pool wall.
Yes, exterior.
South, ex- south exterior pool wall.
And have the CEO clarify. For section six eight, six B eight. Uh, and fences required on the pool's south wall. Sorry, it's a mess.
Well, uh, I could add that the Clamont Hotel has a, uh, an exposed wall on one end of their pool. And that obviously is, uh, uh, beyond a residential pool, the people using it every day, uh, lots of them.
I believe that doesn't have a, a ten foot drop, though.
It's not quite that much, no, but it is, yeah. It is a drop.
I'm sure you guys will get it sorted out during. Process.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, the other thing is you did want Greg to come in and fill out. Two sections, I think it was erosion, and I know it was fences. Uh, I don't know if you want that as a condition.
I, I think we can just generally note that in the record, uh. He's just gonna complete the original app, conditional on use application on those two sections.
Why don't we make it a condition? If the application isn't complete, you can't, it's just saying it's not, we don't permit the. We don't. Fully give them approval until it's completed, and if we're saying it's not.
Well, we voted it was complete, you know. You wanna make it a permit condition?
I just, why not?
Yeah.
It's not a biggie. The thing is, it is complete because it's in documents that are referenced. Right, and, and included along with this cover sheet. Um, so it's more ministerial than it is actually. So it's more ministerial than it is actually completing. The application, um, it would be nice if it were neat and all those boxes were filled in, but I don't, but I think it's been done. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's in all that we've been given as part of.
We couldn't provide all the information and not fill out the application. So there's a section of the application that's not filled out, yeah, yes, I agree, it's inconsequential, but if we ask for things and then have no.
Yeah.
No weight behind it, like, oh, please, come in and fill it out, like, what's, what's the point of just saying please, I think we have to make it a conditional use.
I think it's fine, all they have to do is come in and say, see attached blah blah blah, and just, just literally write in that section, that's all. It's not, it's not substantive, it's just. Fill in the blanks.
So I don't think it needs to be a permit condition.
Okay.
That means nothing.
But it's noted in the record and the applicant acknowledged that they will come in and. Complete those two sections in the original conditional use application, right, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I wrote it down.
Alright. Alright, so we've got our two permit conditions, we've gone through the review of the application under six A being. Six A and B, and now we go back to our eight-track player and press play. On the original approval vote, so all those in favor of improving the application with the. Attached permit conditions. Opposed? Congratulations.
Everyone, thank you for spending the time to do this, it's appreciated.
That wasn't that painful, was it?
And, and appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a practical question for the board, this is the first time I've been handed piles of documents like this, I don't. Do these get turned back in?
So we leave them all on the table and they magically disappear.
Gail, you do not want to just leave them on the table, they throw them out.
They do.
You have to take them home to make sure that they get recycled.
I am a bit.
Leave that responsibility to the town.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be a bit more of an optimist and.
I do have a recycle, I, I do take my stuff home to make sure it ends up in our cycle.
Hey, we all signed it, it's going back in the. Right?
Okay. This is, this is your separate one, Heidi? I don't know why I have that, I, but I definitely don't need it. Okay, I'm gonna put it in here just to be. Weird about things. Yeah, I don't know if it's the only copy, so.
Okay, so we have a second conditional use approval application tonight. And this is conditional use approval application eleven twenty twenty-three. The owner is East Point Property Holdings LLC, agent is Tim Broschew from Haley Ward. Location is fifty-five Cooksey Drive, Seal Harbor, tax map twenty-eight lot three. The zone is Shoreland Residential Two, purpose section three point four recreational, non-commercial, outdoor recreational facility. A swimming pool. And we had a site inspection at four o'clock, and I'll first ask if there's any conflict of interest on the board with this one. None heard. So, let's see. Meredith. Would you like to convey your observations from?
Can I read these first?
Oh, absolutely.
Hold on, uh, this was advertised in both the Ellsworth American and the Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And butters were notified by a letter dated September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Great, thank you.
Now.
Alright, Meredith, you're on, tell us about your observations from the site that's.
We, there's big area all disturbed, apparently there was a building hit as well that used to be in this location, we really. A lot of similarities between these projects. Uh, there's a ledge that is sticking up that they have been exposing that will remain. Uh, and this. Um, it's gonna be set into. The existed, it's, it's a fairly steep slope, but this pool has steps to it with invisible. What do they call, infi- uh, infinity pool?
It's a double.
It double infinity, it's almost like double rainbows, it's just, um. To step down from an upper pool to a lower pool. Um, and then there will be a lawn area in front of the lower pool. Yeah, I think what else to say about that?
Gail, did you have anything to add?
No, it's obviously a work in progress there, and the elevations that are there. Will put there for the purposes of instruction and they're gonna change and. We talked about that, and the plan itself talks a lot about. Water, stormwater and so forth, how that's gonna run in the same direction it always has on this property. And. And then that, since we just started, there's a lot of other activity and building going on around this, but we're just here to come up with.
Alright, well. Tim, I'll turn it over to you and.
I feel like an anomaly actually coming to the meetings. Uh, for record, my name is Tim Broschew, I'm a project commander, engineer with Harry Warren. Uh, we are the agent for the applicant. We put together, I think, a pretty significant application package, we actually had a free application meeting with. Him to make sure we addressed all of your concerns and what we were leaving in the past and made very happy to make sure we could address those things. That she said that they would be items you'd like to look at and discuss. Uh, it is a residential pool and associated landscape areas. Uh, pool can, does consist on two levels, uh, as indicated, there'll be a warm waterfall on the top. Then the bendy edge goes down into a lap pool. Uh, the pools are, have various depths due to the slope from the bottom of the maximum depth, and the deepest spot is. Six foot three or so, six foot. One thing that I failed to mention when we were on site two was, I wasn't mentioning that we are building a underground concrete vault. For all the pool equipment, just to the. Right of the lap pool, it does show on the plan, uh, as well, and. I just wanted to make sure we did note that we are gonna have all pool equipment in an underground vault.
Is that the square, uh, you said to the right of, and we're looking at plan to the left?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna go and down, yeah, there.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, after you've looked through the, I'm just gonna basically do all the plans and everything we submitted and. Answer any questions you have.
Well, it's a pretty complete little pool set here with the, the sections, they were really helpful. I'll open it for public comment too, if. Dennis, any public comment?
Um, thank you for the complete set comment. No, um, I am here if anybody has any questions though about it, um. It is a complete set and, um, we did talk to Kim earlier to make sure if there's anything. She needed and, um. Other than that, I'm here to answer a question if you have any.
Got it, thanks.
There's a full, maybe I'll just say. Obviously, there is a full planting plan that goes with this. And, um, that planting plan will really be done over the winter time so that we can plant in spring. Um, our goal is to have this started to be constructed this winter and to. Continue with the, um, the construction plan. Um, during, during the early spring and then to get as much planted as we can next year, but. It'll be full planted with ground covers and shrubs and trees. So, um, zero, you know, it is on a slope, so there'll be zero erosion or anything like that.
Got it. Well, considering you're the only member of the public here tonight, I am going to close the public. And then let's. Get on with this, so, um. First order of importance, let's. See if we can muster up a motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller will make a motion to find the application complete. I will second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I don't know, what do you think about maybe using the short form?
I would make a motion to use a short form.
I second that.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Short form it is, and then.
Say it's a new planning board member, I'm not sure, I'm gonna see what the long form is.
She's a doozy, she's a doozy. We need our checklist updated, by the way, but, um, now was a comment for no muscle.
The air landing cr- uh, strip is not on the application.
No.
Anymore.
It's on the checklist, so. I have any short form, she has a short. So that's the short form checklist, and if Gail's ever interested, the long form checklist is in there. Alright, so then we gotta do our little thing, is there a motion to approve the application?
I make a motion to approve the application.
I, I second that, alright, so then we press the pause button, we have our discussion and review of the application, so. I've got the applicant's drawings, their, um, conditional use application. In front of me, I've got the short form checklist. This one is in the shoreline zone, so we do have to do section six C as well as five nine. So let's wade through it. Unintended. Right, uh, six A one compatibility. So the applicant talks about on the physical size. That the proposed pool and new landscape features are located within an existing and historic developed areas of property will not result in. Significant physical expansion, the size improve- improvements. The visual impact, the proposed construction is within historically developed areas of property. Proximity to other structures, the proposed construction will not increase or expand proximity to abutting properties or structures. And density of development. The proposed improvements will be located within the limits of existing historic developed areas of property. So C application. Six A two erosion and sedimentation control. They talk about the proposed road control, erosion control measures are indicated on the tax site plan. And will be implemented in accordance with the attached erosion control specs. C application. Six A three highway safety. Uh, propose, they say that the proposed construction will not have any impact on public roads or streets. Existing driveways onto the site will remain unchanged. C application, six A four, impact on town services. The property is, they say, applicant says that the property is currently a seasonal residential use, will not have. Any impacts on town services. So we talked about water there last time. Should we ask the applicant about water?
Yeah, I think we, that was mentioned on site two, it's for the water, you know, we will be. Have a filling pool with, uh, tucked in water. And with this pool, we don't drain this pool, this pool stays full of water. All year round, so we're not gonna be draining it into any, uh, town structure.
So six A four, the application, six A five, land suitability. Uh, applicant says that the proposed project has been designed red, uh, by registered design professionals will not cause any adverse in. Environmental impacts. C application, six A six, lighting outdoor. Applicant talks about the lighting of pool and surrounding landscape areas will include ground lights and overhead lights on structures, no flood lighting of the areas proposed. Lighting specs are included in the application.
You see writing specs?
Yeah.
In the plans.
In the plans, uh. Yeah. So, C application. Stormwater, six A seven. Applicant says all stormwater runoff from the proposed project site will flow directly into those and not flow over any adjacent properties. So C attached stormwater runoff summary. C application. Six A eight vegetation. Uh, applicant says N A.
It's previously disturbed.
Uh, dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases, applicant says N A. So the findings of fact are that they are presented by the applicant and the attached application conclusion was that the. Proposed use is in compliance with all standards. Of section six A, which the standards have been met.
Still moved. I second that.
Right, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, section six B. Right, agriculture, six B one, N A, six B two, air landing sites, N A. Six B seven excavation, they say applicable standard met. From the checklist, that translates to C application. Six B eight fences and walls. They say applicable standard met. Tim, could you just talk about the fences?
Yeah, that was one of the things when I met with Kim, that we wanted specifically, uh. Understand exactly what the, the rules and regulations are associated with that. And we went through this plane because this is not a flat slope, it's on. We've got a lot of terraces and stuff, so we've got, uh, walkways and things where we're putting out gates. And we've also got short retaining walls and the rules say that you have four foot. Wall that is the same as having a fence, and we went through the whole around the property. On the plan with Kim and. Marty Cherry, and I think we addressed all of that, that will come up again when we go for building permits, so we will have to re- review it again. Um, make sure it means everything, but we did address that, and I think we've met all of those. And it's mostly for keeping people out of the pool area.
So C application. And then sign regulations, six B sixteen, N A. Six B eighteen wireless communication facilities, N A. Six B nineteen and animal husbandry two, N A. Six B nineteen and animal husbandry to N A. Six B twenty mobile food vendors N A. Six B twenty one rooming house N A. Six B twenty two hotels and motels N A. So then the findings of fact that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for. Section six B seven and six B eight. And that the conclusion laws section six B is not applicable except for six B seven and six B eight. For which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, second.
Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, we are in the shoreline zone, so section six C shoreline zoning standards. So section sixty one agriculture. Let's see what they say about. N A. Six C two archaeological sites. Apron's, yeah, it's. Not on and not eligible to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places and they've requested verification from the M M H. P C, so. C application.
Isn't that where Kim usually gives them?
We sent a a request to the legislature presentation. For ruling with a map of the site and they. They respond back, so we haven't gotten it back from them yet. But uh they'll just send us back, we don't have anything on record for that, they'll say that's like.
So we just have to put that as a conditional use to clear that?
Essential services, N A. Sixty six parking areas. All existing residential parking will be maintained on the property and no new parking is proposed, so. N A. Sixty seven marine and freshwater structure standards, N A, you're not. Here for a peer. Sixty nine roads and driveways. Uh, they say no new roads or driveways are proposed as part of the project and applicable standard met. So I'm gonna say C application. Water quality. No activity shall deposit into the ground or discharge the waters and stay any pollutant. And they say N A. N A because you're keeping the water in the pool.
We don't have any discharge.
Findings of facts, so the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section sixty. Except for. Section sixty two archaeological sites. And the conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for. Oh, wait, let me amend that findings of facts, except section sixty two and section sixty nine. And that the conclusion of law is that section sixty is not applicable except for. Section sixty two and section sixty nine, for which the standard has been met.
How would you phrase it when we don't have the letter from? Uh, the historic.
You can make a condition that it comes in with.
So we're just assuming that that'll clear and we write it out that way.
Yeah, we can mention it as a permit condition.
Just we're stating now that all standard happens that. We haven't actually. Like the net. Because we're making that a condition.
That's what you did on the previous one, the thirty four six B eight. So that's just the way of going that out there.
Tracy had a motion.
Like as in um. Having to do with the condition? Oh, oh, uh, I could just say so moved.
And I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, so now we go through section five nine. Alright, we'll maintain safe and healthful conditions five nine one. C application, five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. Apron says C application. Five nine three. Will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. Apron says C application. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on.
The uh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Not applicable, we're talking wastewater and not stormwater.
Yes.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, you'd have to change that on your original. Yeah, yeah, the application. So we can change that to N A. But that just. Keep the record clean, you gotta change that on your original. Application. Um, five nine four will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds fish aquatic. Life bird or wa- other wildlife habitat. C application. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. He said C application.
It's kind of a N A too. He's gonna have to change things.
Will conserve shore cover and visual.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking access.
Yeah, and then five nine six. Will protect archaeological and historic resources. As designated in the comp plan. They said C application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect. Uh, existing commercial fishing and maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. You're not in the shoreline commercial district, so N A. Five nine eight will. Avoid problems associated with the floodplain. You say C application and though you're probably seventy eighty feet above the floodplain. Five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, B and C. They say the standard has been met. And the findings of fact are C above. And the conclusion laws that all requirements of section five nine have been met.
Do we have the original application right here? You don't have the original?
I don't have the original.
What's in the red? They'll show, just check.
Right, so permit conditions.
But uh, did we vote on that one?
Right.
Oh, so moved.
Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Right, then back to permit conditions.
Um, once the um, the letter from the National Register of Historic Places is received. Shall be added to the application.
I think that's clear.
Yeah, well, and the the letter has to say that it's acceptable, acceptable.
It actually comes from the M H P C.
Well, okay.
So do we have a?
Well, we. We got it, we just gotta press play.
Would you approve the application?
So maybe we should just read the permanent condition, just. In case.
Yes, uh, a condition, the letter from the M H C P. Uh stating. The site is acceptable, is that how you wanna write that for? For the archaeological?
Their fi- their findings are acceptable. If you're gonna review. Uh, the record of the land.
Um, is obtained and added to the.
Please. So then we circle back, let's press play on the um. The tractor quarter.
Bye.
Right. All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you to the board and Bill, appreciate it.
Thanks Dennis.
Keep that there.
Do we have any other?
Um, I'd like to ask a moving question. And I don't wanna talk about. Last meeting in particular, and especially not any of the issues. As it relates to that. Application, that's an entirely separate thing. But I watched it and I wondered if anybody came away. Thinking that it might be helpful just for the board to somehow. Have. A conversation in general, not about specifically, about how. One might. Develop a framework for analyzing. Stat- sections of the ordinance, um state statute. Um, com- how you. How you compare different ordinances, different sections of the ordinances that all have an impact, like like general provisions versus. Specific provisions and so on and so forth, I just, I heard, I I I felt your pain. As I was watching that meeting. And I wondered if the board. Maybe that's a conversation to have with Andy, whether there's any opportunity for the board to. Get any sort of clarity about how you interpret provisions like six A. Which I read in its plain language to mean you look at whether or not. It's compatible with any permitted use in that, in that entire district. Um, which is different than, is it like the other houses around? And I'm just using that as an example because I don't wanna touch that. Case, but I wondered if the. There might be some interest in. Having a, I don't know, you could do a workshop or something. Um. To the, try to increase comfort levels and try to figure out how to handle stuff like that. I just, I saw, and maybe the answer is no, I'm I'm happy to hear no.
I I guess my feeling is that we ha- it is a mushy thing, but I felt, I guess there's often been discussion of. Um, wh-. What we're doing. As a planning board and they're sort of, I think the lawyer lawyer type is, you know, you look at the code and you just. Review the code, but I feel like we have often stead stated and felt good about the fact that we were to. We're largely trying to make peace in the community, there are a lot of things that we review are like chickens. It's not that you can't have chickens, but you're not gonna get chickens until you talk to your neighbors and make sure that you don't put a rooster underneath that bedroom window. And things like that, that the lot of. The hu- human side of this is bringing the the people uh that these projects impact. Into the same room and giving them the opportunity to talk. And and kinda come to, so. We have. Come into a. A spot here and we can always revert to, hey, it's. We we can just be more. Directly to the code, but I guess. This, the the wishy-washiness, I guess, in there to me is the opportunity for the community to talk to each other. And come to. Um, civil. Just agreements and 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 work with each other. And I don't wanna cut that off and get too like, you know, we just follow the code and and. It cuts off conversation between. Between neighbors, it's my worry.
I'm not sure where we get that power or that, I mean, this board is here. Like, for example, the chickens and the roosters, that was a matter that was developed through the land use. I mean, you developed a new ordinance, and so the ordinance talks about that issue, right? I mean, you're not gonna have roosters on. But the in the ordinance is specific about how you handle chickens and roosters. And that was a process of the legislative bo- of of. Proposals and legislative body then enacting that, and then this board enforces that, and I know you can't be like an automaton and. And but when the legislative body has spoken. Um. Then I don't know that that a board of this sort gets a chance, gets the, gets gets the power to say. Well, I know they've spoken, um, but. Um, I I I don't know. Where that authority comes from, but.
I I think in a lot of our reviews of some of these really. Difficult, you know, applications, I think of the one we just last spent the last eight years on. You know, that um, I'd standing back from forty thousand feet looking at it, I would characterize it as a. Quantitative humanistic. Board review, and there were many, many times about, you know, we were having discussions, you know. And the uh about um, subjective, potentially subjective or subjective. Characteristics of the application before us and I think where we find our guiding lanes to operate in. Is uh sometimes it defined just through the merit of the discussion. And uh, you know, with legal counsel here and kind of us, you know, also having some leeway as a board to, you know. Identify if there is i- if the discussion top does, discussion topic has merit, I don't know, it's it's a collective process. And you know, we talk about it, we may find that, hey, look, that's not under our purview and we come back to the. To the redefine lanes and continue on, but like, you know, I think of our. Decision on the on the quarry and going back to the preamble of the. Quaring ordinance and talking about, you know, what we're tasked with and about the health, welfare and safety of the. You know, the residents of town of Mount Desert. Yeah, there was probably some, you know, subjectivity to a decision like that, but I mean, we we all. Had a finding on that at at the end of it all and, you know, su- superior court can then come and tell us, hey, look, you guys. You know, that's not a review standard, that's the preamble and it'll come back to us, so. You know, I think we, and one thing I was, I wanted to say too is that when we're, you know, and I had. The main municipal association and one of our um former town councils say to us that. You know, we're we're on, we're on a board to make, to offer decisions. And we need to have findings on the decisions before us, and so we can't be. Undecided on something, we've we've gotta be, we've gotta be um. Yeah, or nay. Yeah, and um, you know, I I've I've heard that from from council before, so just.
You mean the individual, we're not supposed to abstain for voting?
We should not be abstaining from voting, absolutely not, so we, you know. We need to take a position one way or another, um, on things as tough as it may be.
But I would, it is tough to do, so I'm asking. But I would, it is tough to do, so all I'm asking is, might there be ways? To deepen. The collective knowledge about how you interpret ordinances and how you how you look at these things. And again, the answer maybe not.
Yeah.
Um, but um. I've got a few ways that that.
I guess I I.
But again, I don't wanna touch that particular.
Yes, but even on all those things, we are always referencing to the code. And that we're finding a interpretation of the code that would that backs up people's concerns. We're not. But I guess I do think of fences and chickens as things of like, you are not allowed to have this until you bring it to the planning board. And then after the planning board, you're allowed to have it, I mean, if this is absolutely like. Except for if your neighbors say, I don't want an eight foot tall fence next door to me and then. We tell you, you can't have it, you know, and it's, there's nothing in the code. Um, really that's saying that that's that hard line is giving the opportunity, so there there are things that that are just. I really do think that they are only brought here to have. Peace between the neighbors and then there's the opportunity to have a conversation to say, to look in the code and see if there's if. If people see that the code. Um, permits things that aren't, I I guess that's what I see as we're having the conversation is that there's two different ways to. Um, interpret the code here and and we're. Recognizing that and recognizing that a lot of people are yeah upset and. Hopefully we come to a peaceful conclusion on that.
You know, I think I think the human component in that is like, like back to the fence thing, like we've had fences, we're like. You know, gosh, does it really have to be eight feet tall, you know, I mean, couldn't you just live with seven feet? You know, and I can see or be out of my window then from this one room and. And there's some dialogue and usually the applicant, you know, takes that in into consideration and that section of fences amended. You know, and and that's, I think that's the human proportion of what we do.
And it doesn't, it's always my projects that that end up not going that way, I've brought a bring thing forward and the neighbors. They wanted a change of use of a building that was already there and the neighbors came out and objected to it and so they actually had to move. The whole entire building and it it didn't work out, like the opening it up to create civility, the neighbors decided that they wanted to throw a fit about it.
Look, I have that in my neighborhood right now, I have that very experience with with a property owner who's trying to develop the last remaining piece on our lane. And this is just for Kim, it's not for the planning board. But there isn't a budding neighbor who's making their lives hell and is close to driving them out of the neighborhood before they even get a foundation built. And. And so sometimes you can't please the neighbors. Sometimes you can, I mean, there's certainly opportunity for middle of ground. But. Um, but I don't know the extent to which that's. I I I don't, I don't agree at all that we should, so we should be like unnecessarily antagonizing neighbors, we all have to ma- live in our neighborhoods and. And I'm not suggesting that the board attempt to do that, but. Um, but we have an ordinance like in this case, so we have an ordinance that's like. That's been added to with some very specific provisions in it. Um, I try and address a specific need. And then how does that compare to like the sort of general provisions that are more vague that you're trying to grapple with? Understanding how those might be deemed to interface of one another, um. And cut one way versus the other, I just wonder if it's helpful, but I don't wanna keep anybody too long in this conversation.
I think it's in the past, um, and I would, I would want to. It would be interesting to have board input on that from. Other than from legal, you know, and like, for instance, I think about like the Hancock County Planning Commission and the. Seminars they put on or sometimes the main municipal association does it too, I know. I think if we have a chance to go to something like that, that's relative to. You know, what we're dealing with, I mean, we should consider that as a board, cause I, you know, I can, I'm. Probably wager what Andy is gonna say or James or legal or whoever it is, you know, and I would wanna hear that more from a. From a planning perspective for once and it might be really informative for us.
It did go.
But we could pay him for legal advice and to try to keep us.
Yeah.
So, um, so I think that's. I think that's important, but.
Oh, it is, of course.
I I know you're not. It's not a blocking one.
I mean, it's, you know, these humanistic discussions kinda, I feel like they bounce off the rails sometimes, you know, like. You know, look, we're we're all trying to be considerate of each other and all paddle canoe forward and to a meaningful result, but. Sometimes the lane, we get lane checked.
I I it seems to me that without a doubt, whatever the outcome of this whole thing is, the fact that we gave the opportunity to everyone to debate it. And that we truly debated. Everybody's perception and understanding gets us through the process better than if we just said. This is the way we see it, don't care that you see it some other different way, it's up to us and that's our decision.
It's not up to like, well, I know the ordinance says buy, I mean, that's not.
But we're not saying it's 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 a a different way of interpreting what the ordinance says, what they, what we're stuck at. Is a, this is what the ordinance says, how do you calculate that?
The whole ordinance, not just a section, that that's what I'm saying, that like, understanding how to make those puzzle pieces fit together is hard to do. And and you can't see. You you have to see them as a whole. But you know, you have to say, anyway, I I do wanna be careful about.
Yeah.
Project versus any other, I just in general, I I I felt.
No, we went through it twice with the quarry.
Yeah, and I I still think as painful as it all is, all the conversation and the fact that it's difficult. Leads to a more peaceful town, you know, that that everybody's. I just think it's really important that people feel heard, even if they don't get their way in the end. It's. It's just better if they feel heard and.
I totally agree with that. I totally agree with that, that's not the issue.
Yeah.
Um, if if somebody were doing something in my neighborhood that I had didn't like, I definitely wanna be heard.
Yeah.
Um, but um, but then. I'm gonna go to the text, I'm gonna go to the go to the book. And cause the book is not just the book, the book is what the voters have called us.
Yeah.
We should be doing. So. Thank you for indulging in that conversation.
I'm sure the subject will come up again.
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, I that it would be nice to do it in a format where you're not like.
And what what are you thinking, I guess, um, would be the. The way that we would have the conversation that you're suggesting that we become.
Well, for example, in, well, I'm I'm hugging again to that case, but but without referring to that case. Like, how does one grapple with six A? And how does one in theory grapple with six A and its language when you're folding it in with. Other provisions that are more specific and that were passed after that, I presume, and. And made changes, specific changes to how the ordinance is to function and be and be used. Um, how does one do that? And and do it in a way that this is our stat, our our legal requirement.
The seems like the context is different, which each application, I mean, we've had applications where. The whole thing ends at six A. You know, it's not compatible. Hey, we're alright.
Yeah, and I I I understand.
Many different applications to not just.
I mean. See, I got confused by what your definition of compatible was and what was in that discussion, like what is compatible to what?
Yes, it talks.
And the language of it is clear to me, it's like, is this compatible with a type of use that's allowed? In this district and to be truthful, if you look at the ordinance, trailer parks are allowed in that district, but run a conditional use permit, so. How is, it's not compatible, is it compatible to like the neighborhood? I I don't think so, I think it's compatible to what you can do in that district.
See.
That's permitted in that district.
We've had decisions where. The the question of compatibility has failed because of. One component of compatibility, it's the physical side.
Yes.
Too big.
Yeah.
Was uh.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, and that's a visual visual impact is one of them, which is, there's nothing in the code that would define what is, you know, would.
There, I say there are other, there are other provisions of the code that are more specific, so all I'm saying is as a matter of. Legal process, not relating to this project, cause I suspect there will be others. Right, I'm looking ahead because I'm not part of this, this that discussion. How do you in the future, when you get?
I tell you, when when we have had those decisions, I can only talk from past experience, when. We've had those decisions on compatibility fail in the past, we have had to quantify.
Yes.
Best as we possibly could on that specific review criteria. You know, it wa- it wasn't because one of us.
You've gotta make the record.
We have to make the record and it's gotta stand and it's gotta, and how do you quantify visual impact? You know, and it's, and that's where I circle back to, it's just so specific to the application.
Cause the bottom line is the judge's not gonna go through the whole, the if on review, a judge is not gonna wanna say, I'm not going through that whole thing, you tell me what you made your decision on.
And so the.
Or you'll get bounced back.
And and so sometimes those those findings take forever to, you know, really.
Yeah.
Substantiate.
Yeah.
Quantifiable manner, you know, and and uh, yeah, it's tough.
Anyway, again, thank you.
Alright.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor. And I opposed. There you go. It's not even a.
Hit the hammer?
Hit the hammer.